Good afternoon, colleagues. The 21st plenary meeting of the 11th Emergency Special Session of the General Assembly is called to order. The Assembly will continue its consideration of Agenda Item 5, entitled "Letter dated 28 February 2014, from the Permanent Representative of Ukraine to the United Nations, addressed to the President of the Security Council." I give the floor now to the distinguished representative of Czechia, His Excellency Eduard Holisius, Deputy Minister for Foreign Affairs of Czechia.
Mr. President, Excellencies, distinguished delegates, ladies and gentlemen. Three years ago, Russia launched a full-scale invasion of Ukraine, a sovereign and independent nation. But let us not forget that this war commenced already 11 years ago, in February 2014, with the Russian occupation of Crimea and parts of Donbass as part of a well-orchestrated expansionist plan to seize territories of a sovereign nation through aggression and to recreate neo-colonial spheres of influence. The toll of this unprovoked war is disastrous. Millions of Ukrainians have been displaced, thousands have been killed or injured. Powerful missiles and bombs systematically strike populated areas in Ukrainian cities, including schools, hospitals, and ports far away from the frontline. Attacks against Ukraine's energy grid in the midst of winter have become one of the defining, abhorrent hallmarks of this war. With its deliberate targeting of civilians and civilian infrastructure, Moscow cynically seeks to undermine the resilience of the Ukrainian men and women who, with remarkable courage, defend their country. And Russia's flagrant violation of international law doesn't stop there. Russia is responsible for a wall array of war crimes, violations of human rights and international humanitarian law in Ukraine. The United Nations investigation documented numerous cases of summary executions, torture, rape, and other acts of violence used as Russia's tactic of war against Ukrainian civilians and prisoners of war, as well as forced transfers and deportations of Ukrainian children. Czechia considers accountability as a cornerstone of any lasting peace. The leadership crime of aggression must not go unpunished, and those responsible for war crimes and other atrocities must be brought to justice; otherwise impunity will continue and widen. The invasion of Ukraine has also highlighted the stark link between aggression abroad and intensified repression of civil and political rights within Russia itself. One year after the death of Alexei Navalny, Russia continues its systemic crackdown on human rights, civil society, independent media, and dissent of any kind. Mr. President, this hall has heard repeated call of the international community on Russia to immediately cease hostilities, withdraw all its forces from Ukrainian territory, and respect Ukrainians' independence, sovereignty, and territorial integrity within its internationally recognized borders. A call that Russia, a permanent member of the Security Council, has chosen to ignore. Let me be clear: until Russia respects the fundamental principles of international law, there can be no business, as usual, with the aggressor. Mr. President, in a year that many wait with hope, we reaffirm our unwavering commitment to a just and lasting peace in Ukraine. We all want to see this year as the year during which negotiated settlement based on international law is found. However, let me stress that no durable settlement for Ukraine can be found without Ukraine's participation and consent. Our own Czech history suggests that aggressors are seldom satisfied with concessions designed to appease them. Weak compromises embolden them and bring us nothing but more war and destruction. And Russia's imperialist aggression cannot be appeased; it must be faced with strength and resolve. Mr. President, we all have a stake in Ukraine prevailing as a sovereign nation within its internationally recognized borders. Czechia has fully supported the draft resolution A/ES 11/L10 but put forward to our consideration by Ukraine and stands firmly in solidarity with Ukraine and its people in their self-defense until a just and lasting peace, in line with the United Nations Charter, is finally secured. Thank you for your attention.
I thank the distinguished representative of Czechia. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Georgia, His Excellency Lasha Darsalia, Deputy Minister for Foreign Affairs of Georgia.
Thank you, Mr. President, Excellencies. The resumption of this emergency special session once again reminds us that the founding principles of this organization remain as relevant as ever. Every single day of the past three years in the wake of Russia's war against Ukraine has brought unbearable human harm and immense scale of destruction. The implication of this war has resonated far beyond the borders of one single member state and posed threat to international peace and security, further exacerbating global challenges. Excellencies, I would like to emphasize that Georgia's support for the territorial integrity and sovereignty of Ukraine within its internationally recognized borders is unwavering. Since the outbreak of the war, Georgia has demonstrated full solidarity with Ukraine through strong diplomatic steps as well as by offering active and substantial humanitarian assistance. Georgia sponsored, joined, or supported around 600 documents and initiatives in major international organizations, which, among others, included creation of special mechanisms in support of Ukraine. The government of Georgia has also been providing substantial humanitarian assistance to Ukraine since the beginning of the aggression. Georgia provided substantial humanitarian assistance to Ukraine, including the allocation of more than 1,000 tons of humanitarian aid as well as financial assistance and extending support to Ukrainians arriving in Georgia. Georgia, as a responsible member of international community, believes that international diplomacy should play a crucial role in resolving conflicts by facilitating dialogue and cooperation among nations. More than 20 years have passed since Georgia regained its independence, albeit its path is still paved with the fight for sovereignty and territorial integrity. Our recent history time and again illustrates the crucial importance of peace and stability for further development. Only principled and proactive international engagement can help find the common ground and create a framework for effective resolution that is not achievable through confrontation. I am confident that peaceful resolution of this war based on the Charter and international law would promote regional stability in Europe by preventing further tensions and escalations. Distinguished delegates, let me reaffirm once again Georgia's unwavering support to the independence, sovereignty, and territorial integrity of Ukraine within its internationally recognized borders, extending to its territorial waters. Georgia will stand in solidarity with Ukraine and the Ukrainian people on the path to comprehensive, lasting peace. Thank you very much.
I thank the distinguished representative of Georgia. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of the Kingdom of the Netherlands, Her Excellency Erica Schouten, Special Envoy for Ukraine of the Foreign Minister of the Kingdom of Netherlands.
Mr. President, distinguished delegates. The Netherlands aligns itself with the EU statement that will be delivered. Three years ago today, a line was crossed. Ukraine's sovereignty and territorial integrity were violated. International law was trampled on. The very principles of the United Nations Charter were blatantly disregarded. Ukraine did not provoke this war, nor did it start it. Russia, a permanent member of the UN Security Council, a body with a special responsibility to uphold peace and security under the UN Charter, chose to violate Ukraine's sovereignty and territorial integrity and thereby defounding principles on which this organization is built. Today's vote is a clear signal in support of international law, upholding the UN Charter and against creating a world where might is right. Ending the war with a quick fix gives the aggressor the opportunity for repetition and will set a precedent for aggressors elsewhere. For three years, the people of Ukraine have demonstrated extraordinary resilience against Russia's unprovoked aggression. But the costs have been staggering at the frontline and behind the frontline as Russia continues its attacks on energy and other civilian infrastructure and on cultural objects on a daily basis. And in the occupied territories, where according to the Human Rights Monitoring Mission in Ukraine, Russia's occupation brings widespread suffering and oppression. Russia intends to break the Ukrainian spirit, artificially alter its demographics, and forcibly russify millions under occupation and destroy Ukrainian identity. We cannot let Russia succeed. Russia's aggression has had devastating and long-lasting consequences, also for the world as a whole. Food and energy prices have soared. The environment has been adversely affected, and there is an escalating risk of a nuclear disaster due to Russia's attacks on the Ukrainian power grid connected to the nuclear plants. We all want peace, the Ukrainian people most of all. And there will be peace the moment Russia stops the fighting. But it cannot be peace at any cost. Peace must be just, comprehensive, and lasting. And Ukraine must have a seat at the negotiating table to decide on its future. Nothing about Ukraine without Ukraine. A just peace also means that international crimes do not go unpunished, including the crime of aggression. To ensure might does not make right, we need to respect all principles we have vowed to uphold now and in the future. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of the Kingdom of the Netherlands. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of the European Union.
President, colleagues, I have the honor to speak on behalf of the European Union and 26 member states. We gathered in this hall today to reiterate three full years since Russia launched this illegal and provoked full-scale invasion of Ukraine, our unwavering support for international law and for the principles of sovereignty and territorial integrity enshrined in the UN Charter. We gathered today to advocate for an early end to the war of aggression and for a just, lasting, and comprehensive peace in Ukraine in line with the UN Charter. Those core principles are not abstract ideals. They are vital pillars for every nation within the UN. They apply to all of us. The foundation of a multilateral system is at risk if the UN core principles are undermined and if we allow the power of guns to replace in our troubled world the power of law. It is that simple and that vital. We support all meaningful efforts under the UN Charter to bring an end to Russia's war of aggression. No one wants and needs peace in Ukraine more than the Ukrainian people. No one has a larger stake in European security than Europeans. And no one can afford to ignore the devastating consequences of this war for regional and global stability. Dear colleagues, the Ukraine Resolution that we adopted today reiterates in the strongest way the UN memberships call for renewed diplomatic efforts towards a comprehensive, just, and lasting peace, an early peace in Ukraine this year in line with the UN Charter. We took every effort to ensure that the process to prepare this resolution together with our Ukrainian colleagues should be transparent and inclusive. Together with Ukraine, we spared no effort to take comments on board as much as possible. We are grateful to all delegations that engaged with us in this process. Your efforts strengthened the text that was adopted today. Thank you. Colleagues, the time for peace is now, and peace must be just, lasting, and comprehensive. Any peace that risks rewarding aggression increases the risk for any country, wherever in the world, to face similar aggression. It creates a dangerous precedent for the future, undermining the principles of international law and the sovereignty of all nations. But a peace that is in line with the core principles of the UN Charter ensures a safer world for all of us. And we believe that in today's turbulent world, it is especially imperative to ensure that our calls for peace leave absolutely no doubt about the UN membership's commitment to UN principles, the UN Charter, and the territorial integrity and sovereignty of nations. And this is exactly what we did today. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of the European Union. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Switzerland.
Mr. President. Mr. President, developments in relation to Ukraine are currently evolving rapidly. While Switzerland is monitoring the situation closely, we see this day of commemoration as an opportunity to reaffirm the principles that unite us, in particular respect for international law, including the United Nations Charter. We remain steadfast in our support for Ukraine and call for an immediate end to hostilities. We call on Russia to withdraw its troops from the entire territory of Ukraine. Above all, we place the Ukrainian people at the heart of our concerns. The human cost of this war is immense. It continues to cause indescribable loss and suffering, leaving millions in need of humanitarian aid or forcing them to flee their homes. More than half of Ukraine's energy facilities have been damaged or destroyed. We reiterate that a nuclear accident must be avoided at all costs. Switzerland emphasizes that the civilian population and infrastructure are protected by international humanitarian law and that attacks against them are prohibited. We call on all parties to the conflict to respect international humanitarian law in all circumstances. This also includes the obligation to authorize and facilitate rapid and unimpeded humanitarian access. We have stated this on several occasions. Beyond Ukraine, this war has profound consequences. It destabilizes food security and energy supply as well as international security. This war, therefore, endangers future generations. Mr. President, Russia's military aggression against Ukraine constitutes a serious violation of international law, in particular of Ukraine's sovereignty and territorial integrity. It jeopardizes our multilateral order as well as the very principles of the United Nations Charter, obligations that all of us, as member states of this organization, have pledged to respect. The resolution presented by Ukraine, which we have adopted today, carries a powerful message: a call for an end to the war, for diplomacy, and for respect for international law. It advocates peace. True to this commitment, Switzerland is strongly involved, whether that be through our Security Council mandate, the organization of the Bergenstock Conference in June 2024, or its targeted aid for reconstruction and in the humanitarian field. We will continue to work to contribute to peace and security in Europe when we chair the OSCE in 2026. Above all, Switzerland remains firmly committed to a comprehensive, just, and lasting peace for Ukraine based on international law, including the United Nations Charter. We welcome any initiative that could lead to the achievement of this goal. It is essential that Ukraine be involved in these discussions from the outset as its future depends on it. As the General Assembly, it is our responsibility to recall and defend the principles that unite us. In this way, we can move towards a future in which peace will prevail for all of us. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Switzerland. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Bulgaria.
President, today we solemnly mark three years since the start of Russia's illegal, unprovoked, and utterly unjustified full-scale war of aggression against Ukraine. For three long years, the Ukrainian people have endured immense suffering, loss, and destruction as they bravely defend their homeland. Bulgaria strongly condemns Russia's ongoing war of aggression, which constitutes a blatant violation of international law, the UN Charter, and the fundamental principles of sovereignty and territorial integrity. This war is a direct challenge to the rules-based international order. We must ensure that military aggression and territorial annexation never become viable means of achieving geopolitical goals. We reaffirm our unwavering support for Ukraine's independence, sovereignty, and territorial integrity within internationally recognized borders. Bulgaria calls for the immediate cessation of hostilities and the full withdrawal of Russian forces from Ukrainian territory. We urge Russia to engage in meaningful dialogue and diplomacy to reach a peaceful resolution in full accordance with the UN Charter and international law. Any discussion on peace must be firmly rooted in international law and the UN Charter. No peace initiative or negotiation framework should be pursued without Ukraine's direct involvement. Furthermore, Ukraine must enter any negotiations from the strongest possible position. The foundation of any future peace must include accountability for Russia's crimes in Ukraine. We emphasize the need to hold those responsible for war crimes, crimes against humanity, and other atrocities to account. We also recall the obligation of all states under Article 2 of the United Nations Charter. Bulgaria welcomes recent steps towards establishing a special tribunal for the crime of aggression against Ukraine. We firmly believe that Ukraine's future lies within the European family at a transatlantic community, and we stand ready to support Ukraine on this path. Russia's war of aggression has also underscored the strategic importance of security and resilience in the Black Sea region, one of the most affected by this conflict. Stability and cooperation in the Black Sea must be addressed within the broader context of your Atlantic security. In this regard, the swift adoption of the new EU Black Sea strategy, focusing on connectivity, stability, economic cooperation, and the resilience of neighboring countries, is of paramount importance. As we mark this grim anniversary, this assembly has spoken in favor of just and lasting peace, one based on the UN Charter and the principles of sovereign equality and territorial integrity of states. The path of peace begins where Russia's aggression against Ukraine ends. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Bulgaria. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Slovakia.
Mr. President, we fully align ourselves with the statement made by the representative of the European Union, and I can therefore be very brief. Slovakia has cosponsored the resolution submitted by Ukraine and voted yes. Mr. President, three years ago, Russia invaded Ukraine in violation of the United Nations Charter and international law. The military invasion is still going on. The world recognizes the strength and bravery of Ukrainian people fighting for their survival. Let me reiterate that Slovakia supports the sovereignty, independence, and territorial integrity of Ukraine within its internationally recognized borders as a matter of principle. Borders must be respected and cannot be changed by force. Mr. President, the physical devastation and the humanitarian and economic costs to Ukraine caused by the conflict have been immense. The longer this tragedy goes on, the worse it will be and the more the human suffering it will entail. Slovakia has been taking concrete action to provide humanitarian assistance to Ukraine and to help and support people fleeing Ukraine on its territory since the onset of the war in 2022. Mr. President, as you know, the position of my country has been that this conflict must be ended diplomatically at the negotiating table in dialogue with all interested parties. Slovakia has consistently supported all international efforts dedicated to pursuing peace negotiations, including the joint proposal from China and Brazil for mediating peace. And we therefore welcome the commitment of President Trump to ending the Russian-Ukrainian war and to a lasting peace in Ukraine. Slovakia supported the resolution proposed by the United States delegation today because it is consistent with our view on the peaceful settlement of disputes as enshrined in the United Nations Charter. Mr. President, we hope that meaningful progress involving all parties, including Ukraine and the European Union, will soon be made, leading to a just and lasting peace and also allowing Ukraine to feel confident about its future security. Thank you very much for your attention.
I thank the distinguished representative of Slovakia. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Austria.
Excellencies, Mr. President, Austria aligns itself with a statement of the European Union ambassador. It has been three years since Russia's unprovoked, unjustified, and illegal full-scale aggression against its neighbor Ukraine. It has been three years since Russia has violated one of the core principles of the UN Charter, a clear violation of international law. And it has been three years that we have stood in solidarity with Ukraine. To this day, Ukrainian men, women, and children continue to suffer from Russian attacks, attacks that are in clear violation of international humanitarian law. It is clear civilians shall not be the object of attacks. We therefore repeat our calls to the leadership of the Russian Federation to immediately cease its brutal war against Ukraine and withdraw its military forces. Excellencies, Austria doesn't provide weapons to Ukraine. But in addition to our common European Union contributions, we have provided bilaterally almost 300 million euros in financial and humanitarian aid to Ukraine since February 22, and almost 100,000 Ukrainians have found a second home in our country, Austria. This comes in addition to, and not instead of, our continued humanitarian assistance to crises all around the world, including in Africa and, of course, the Middle East. Mr. President, the Russian aggression against Ukraine is not a European problem. It is not a European problem. It is a matter of global concern. We have all felt the consequences, but of course, especially those living in the world's most vulnerable countries, from delayed food deliveries to rising energy prices and threats of nuclear incidents. In addition to our firm rejection of any threats with nuclear weapons, we remain particularly concerned about the risk of damages to Ukraine's nuclear infrastructure. concerned about the risk of damages to Ukraine's nuclear infrastructure. Recent strikes against the Chernobyl nuclear power plant are alarming. Additional Protocol One to the Geneva Conventions specifically prohibits attacks against installations containing dangerous forces. We urge all actors to respect international law in this regard and reiterate our full support for the efforts by the IAEA and Director General Rafael Grossi. So what remedies do we have as the international community? As a neutral state that is not part of any military alliance for Austria, action within the United Nations is key, and when international law is blatantly violated, we continue to stand up for the rule of law and our UN Charter. This is what today's debate is for, and this is what we would expect if we were in Ukraine's shoes. And this is also why we voted yes for the resolution tabled by Ukraine, to show solidarity with the civilian population, to stand up against violations of international law and to call for a peaceful solution on the basis of the UN Charter and international law. Thank you to all of you who supported this resolution and also to all of those who made efforts in this direction. I know it's sometimes hard. Mr. President, no one wants peace more than the people of Ukraine and of course, also the people of Austria. Austria, much like Secretary-General Guterres has said, supports peace efforts in this regard. We are always in favor of peace. At the same time, it must be a peace, a comprehensive, just and lasting peace, a peace that is achieved on the table with Ukraine present and a peace in line with the UN Charter. Let me be clear, as our Chancellor Alexander Schallenberg has said, no negotiations about Ukraine without Ukraine, and no decisions on European security without Europe. Today, we send a strong signal that an unprovoked aggression against any country cannot be accepted by the international community. Today, we stood up for international law. Today, we voted yes to preserve our charter. Thank you very much.
I thank the distinguished representative of Austria. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Germany.
Germany aligns itself with a statement delivered by the European Union. Mr. President, three years ago, Russia launched a full-scale invasion of Ukraine and started a war that shook the foundations of European and global security. Russia violated a guiding principle upon which the United Nations was founded, that we respect the sovereignty and territorial integrity of all member states, large and small. Today, the General Assembly has made its position clear. Together, we once again have agreed on the urgent need for a comprehensive, just and lasting peace in Ukraine, consistent with the Charter of the United Nations. We have called for an immediate cessation of the hostilities of Russia against Ukraine, and we joined the call for accountability for the most serious crimes committed on the territory of Ukraine. Russia must end its war of aggression. This war must end in line with our UN Charter, with full respect to the principles of sovereignty and territorial integrity of Ukraine within its internationally recognized borders, and the war must end in a way that guarantees that Russia never again uses force to attempt to redraw the borders of Ukraine, violating Europe's security. A sham peace imposed against the will of the Ukrainian people will serve no one. The sovereignty of members of these organizations must be protected. Every state must be able to freely choose its destiny without fearing aggression. That is why we have stood resolutely with Ukraine also today, and we will continue our support in solidarity with Ukraine in defense of Europe's security and for the sake of the UN Charter, the charter that safeguards all nations, large and small, from aggression. Mr. President, excellencies, colleagues, the world is watching how we rise to the challenge of ending this war. Let us choose wisely, let us choose justice, let us choose a peace that ensures a safer world for all of us. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Germany. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of the United Kingdom.
Mr. President, the United Kingdom welcomes the resumption of this special session on Ukraine. Three years on, Russia's illegal and unprovoked invasion has caused untold suffering, most recently in the massive wave of drone attacks over the weekend, reportedly the largest in a single night in three years. Millions of Ukrainians have fled their homes, tens of thousands of civilians have been killed, children forcibly deported, schools, homes, hospitals, places of worship destroyed. And Russia's forces have committed the most appalling crimes: summary executions, torture, rape. Enough is enough, as the Secretary-General reminded us. And Russia's aggression did not begin three years ago, but long before that. When my Prime Minister spoke to President Zelensky this week, he was clear that any outcome to the war must safeguard Ukraine's sovereignty and territorial integrity. A peace that rewards aggression is not a real peace, and a peace that rewards aggression will not last, because Putin has a long track record of making deals with his fingers crossed behind his back. Well, not this time. We must not make the mistake of weak deals of the past. This time, there must be peace through strength, and that is why there can be no negotiation about Ukraine without Ukraine. Colleagues, it is not just Ukraine's security that is at stake, it is Britain's too, but it is the security of all of us, every single member state who does not want to see tanks driving over their border, killing their people, stealing their children and redrawing their borders on a whim. Today, 93 countries again stood with Ukraine, voting to reaffirm our respect for Ukraine's sovereignty and territorial integrity and for the UN Charter. We all want an end to this war, no country more so than Ukraine and its people. As my Prime Minister has said, the UK is ready to play its part to support efforts for peace, and we will continue to support Ukraine, to defend itself and to have its voice heard. But let us not forget a simple truth, that Russia could end this war tomorrow by ceasing its aggression and withdrawing its forces from Ukraine. But the Kremlin shows no more sign of that than they have done at any point in the last three years. So today, as for the last three years and for the future, we stand shoulder to shoulder with Ukraine and with our allies for as long as it takes, until Ukraine wins a peace that respects the UN Charter and delivers a secure future for its people and for all of us. Thank you, President.
I thank the distinguished representative of the United Kingdom. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Malta.
President, today, as we gather to mark three years since Russia unleashed its war of aggression against Ukraine, we remember the countless civilians affected, mothers and fathers, brothers and sisters, sons and daughters. Malta aligns itself with the statements delivered by the European Union. Today's gathering takes place at a very delicate time, with ongoing discussions on how to bring an end to this illegal and unjustified war. Diplomatic solutions, as underlined by the Secretary-General, are the only way forward. Any talks must include the participation of Ukraine at all stages of negotiations, if they are to lead to a comprehensive, just and lasting peace, which ultimately safeguards the security interests of Ukraine and its people in full respect of principles of sovereign equality and territorial integrity of states, as underlined in various UN resolutions. We continue to emphatically denounce Russia's decision to pursue aggression and inflict devastation, whilst condemning the bravery, commending the bravery, determination and resilience of Ukraine and its people who continue to fight for freedom and the territorial integrity of Ukraine. We commend their unbreakable spirit and commitment to sovereignty, freedom and rule of law. The consequences of this war have been tragic, not only for Ukraine, but for global stability and order, putting considerable strain on our international rules-based order, putting in jeopardy international peace and security. Russia's unprovoked aggression against Ukraine has made us witness deliberate attacks against civilians, critical infrastructure and energy systems, resulting in massive civilian casualties and human suffering. All these actions constitute serious violations of international law and international humanitarian law, for which Russia needs to be held accountable. Malta remains firm in calling on Russia to immediately cease all hostilities and to unconditionally and completely withdraw all its forces and military equipment from the entire territory of Ukraine within its internationally recognized borders. Malta also stands united with those who strive to uphold universal principles enshrined in the United Nations Charter and to advance implementation of the resolutions adopted by the General Assembly, including today. The sexual and gender-based violence in Ukraine and the forced deportations in Ukraine, notably relating to the chances of children, to Russia remain a concern. We take this opportunity to call for the immediate cessation of such practices with a safe return of all forcibly displaced individuals. In its documentation of war crimes, arbitrary detentions as well as forced deportations, we continue to fully support the work of the Independent International Commission of Inquiry on Ukraine. We urge all parties to cooperate with this commission and with other international mechanisms to ensure the accountability of such violations. President, accountability for all war crimes and crimes against humanity committed during this war of aggression is important not only to prevent impunity but also to bring justice to the victims. With the interest in safeguarding justice for victims, we remain firm in our commitment to ensure that all those responsible for international crimes are held accountable under international law. Represented as a beacon of hope and justice, we recall our steady support for the work of the International Criminal Court in its pursuit for lasting global peace. Likewise, we take this occasion to assert our backing for the establishment of a special tribunal with the aim of prosecuting crimes of aggression against Ukraine. President, the consequences of this war have likewise highlighted the necessity to continue stressing the importance of adhering to the indispensable pillars and concrete principles of ensuring nuclear safety, as well as security throughout the conflicts in Ukraine. We therefore reiterate our call on Russia to cease its relentless attacks upon Ukraine's critical energy infrastructure and to immediately withdraw all its occupying unauthorized military personnel from the Zaporizhzhya nuclear power plant. Given these circumstances, we denounce the latest attacks by Russia on the IAEA staff as well as the Chernobyl nuclear power plant strikes, which raise new concerns vis-à-vis safety at nuclear facilities in Ukraine's conflict zones. Russia's war of aggression against Ukraine has not prevented countries around the world from providing humanitarian and other assistance to address needs in Ukraine. Malta has been active in providing humanitarian assistance to Ukraine, which we will continue to do so as long as it is necessary. We have also been proud to support humanitarian demining initiatives, which remain crucial to ensure sustained reconstruction efforts in Ukraine. President, in closing, we believe that a just, lasting and comprehensive peace in Ukraine requires the immediate end of hostilities by Russia, together with the unconditional and full withdrawal of Russian military forces from Ukraine's entire territory in its internationally recognized borders. It is this spirit Malta will continue to support all efforts. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Malta. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Albania.
Mr. President, three years ago, what started as a special military operations clearly was and continues to be an unprovoked and unjustified military aggression against Ukraine by a permanent member of the United Nations Security Council. By pursuing an expansionist agenda through forts, Russia's war of choice has brought widespread devastation, causing immense civil suffering, massive casualties and the destruction of Ukraine's essential infrastructure. Mr. President, the full-scale invasion of Ukraine is in clear violation of the United Nations Charter and international law. The General Assembly has repeatedly condemned this aggression, the International Criminal Court has issued arrest warrants, the International Court of Justice has ordered the withdrawal of Russian forces from the Ukrainian territory. The United Nations has put Russian military forces and armed proxy groups in its list of shame over violations of children's rights in its war in Ukraine. In the face of this injustice, the Ukrainian people have demonstrated extraordinary courage defending their land and their freedom with unwavering resolve. Russia's initial ambitions have faltered, and the strength of Ukrainian spirit has proven far greater than Russia's military might. Colleagues, this aggression has not only devastated Ukraine but has far greater consequences in our continent and beyond. It is our moral and legal obligation to condemn the breach of international law and the disrespect of UN Charter and stand by the people of Ukraine in their resistance to protect their own country. While this senseless war has lasted too long, it is time to put an end to it. We are increasingly optimistic that the recent efforts and engagement of the United States together with the resolute support of the European Union will provide the right impetus for achieving a just solution that will bring a durable peace for the region and Europe as a whole. The ultimate outcome of these concentrated efforts to end the war must be a just, sustainable and comprehensive peace, one that fully upholds Ukraine's sovereignty, independence and territorial integrity in accordance with the UN Charter, international law and the resolutions of the General Assembly. Ukraine's future must be defined by its independence, its strength and its prosperity, free to choose its own path without fear of further aggression. Moreover, we must ensure strong international guarantees that such violations and undermining of international law will never be tolerated. Accountability is not just an afterthought, it must be a central pillar of the peace process. In this context, Albania supports all efforts to achieve realistic and sustainable steps towards peace, a peace grounded in the principles of justice, sovereignty and accountability. Mr. President, let me conclude by reaffirming Albania's unwavering support for Ukraine. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Albania. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Estonia. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Estonia.
President, today we mark three years since Russia launched an unprovoked and unjustified, full-scale, brutal war against Ukraine. This act of aggression is not only a vicious attack against an independent and sovereign Ukraine, but against international law and the global peace. The UN Charter, global nonproliferation regime, moreover, always is having devastating effects to global food and energy markets in many parts of the world. Unfortunately, Russia's goal, goals vis-à-vis Ukraine, has not changed: to finish off Ukrainian nation and to erase sovereign Ukraine from the map, a plan which started back in 2014. I recall that Kremlin has repeatedly denied the legitimacy of the Ukrainian state and its right to exist, and is increasingly desperate to remove democratically elected President Zelensky from power. War crimes, huge number of civilian deaths, grave human rights violations, thousands of deported Ukrainian children, total suffering and destruction that Russia has caused in Ukraine are a testament to those claims. Against all of the calls by member states and numerous UN General Assembly resolutions, Russia's aggression continues. According to the UN, in January this year alone, Russia's attacks caused almost 900 civilian casualties, including 21 children. Russia has continued shelling schools and hospitals, energy and food infrastructure, and on top of this, in February, struck with a war drone the Chernobyl Nuclear Power Plant in grave violation of international atomic energy agency seven indispensable pillars. Russia's aggression is economically, politically, and militarily supported by Iran, DIPERK, and Belarus. Since last October, the DIPERK has elevated its support by deploying troops to fight alongside Russian troops. This constitutes a major escalation, also indicating that Russia is suffering heavy casualties at the front lines and is struggling to recruit fresh cannon fodder. And indeed, it has been estimated that at current pace, Russia couldn't occupy the whole territory of Ukraine until the year 2075. And even this would be an attainable goal as the number of Russian soldiers left to rot in the black Ukrainian soil is growing every single day. President, the resolution adopted today by a vast majority of the UN member states in the General Assembly calls for a comprehensive, just, and lasting peace in Ukraine based on accountability, principles of the UN Charter and territorial integrity of Ukraine within its internationally recognized borders extending to its territorial waters. I hope that the Security Council would be able to follow the example of the most democratic and authoritative body of the UN, this General Assembly. Today, Estonia celebrates the 107th anniversary of our independence. We know only too well what losing freedom and independence means. The World War II ended with a peace deal that left Estonia and many other countries in Europe deprived of their independence and sovereignty and endure half a century of totalitarian Soviet oppression. This was not a just peace deal at all for us. To avoid the mistakes of the past, we should not try to appease the criminal on the ICC wanted list and neglect the accountability for a crime of aggression as this would only lead to new crimes and more bloodshed. Appeased dictators will always come back for more. How to achieve just and lasting peace? Yulia Navalnaya, widow of the leading Russian opposition figure Alexei Navalny, who was starved and then killed by Kremlin in Siberia and Gulag, recently warned, I quote, "There is no point to negotiate with Putin. He will lie, he will betray. If he remains in power, he will find a way to break the agreement. If he loses power, the agreement will become meaningless," end of quote. So the question really is, how can one trust somebody who cheats and changes the rules of a game under the guise of new realities whenever suitable or beneficial? What is Putin's legitimacy worth after 25 years of clinging to power, which have included regular and massive election fraud, physical elimination of political opponents, extensive violations of human rights, war crimes, and extradition killings in Trelia using chemical weapons? Only free and fair elections, which the Russian people can only dream about for last decades, would reveal the real support for the dictator. It's quite clear his ratings are not even close to what Kremlin's propaganda hongs. It appears also relevant to repeat again loud and clear that when it comes to the so-called root causes of this war, it is Russia's imperial and neocolonial obsession with Ukraine and denial of Ukraine's existence that unleashed its aggression. The root cause of the war in Ukraine is Putin's unwillingness to accept the irreversibility of the collapse of the Soviet Union. So let's not succumb to Russian propaganda. Russia is still an aggressor, and Ukraine is still the victim of aggression. The member states who supported the resolution on just and lasting peace in Ukraine thereby supported the UN Charter, the international law, and rejected fears of influence and might makes right conduct in international relations. I want to thank you all for this. I want to thank you all for this. Together, we need to uphold the principles of the UN Charter more than ever. We all need a comprehensive, just, and lasting peace, not just a shady deal at the expense of Ukraine and the UN Charter. It is obvious that achieving just and lasting peace in Ukraine without Europe and Ukraine participating in the negotiations over the European security architecture is an illusion and dangerous one. In conclusion, let me once again insist that Russia immediately, completely, and unconditionally withdraws its military forces and mercenaries from the entire territory of Ukraine within its internationally recognized borders. This would be the quickest way to peace. Until then, let me assure that Estonia is determined to continue supporting Ukraine by all means at our disposal. Supporting Ukraine's right for self-defense according to Article 51 of the UN Charter is the right thing to do from the moral, legal, and global security point of view. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Estonia. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of the Republic of Moldova.
Mr. President, Honorable Ministers, Excellencies, Distinguished Delegates, it has been three years already since Russia's full-scale and relentless war of aggression against Ukraine triggered unimaginable suffering and destruction with their far-reaching implications for international peace and security. We resolutely condemn this brutal war and reaffirm our unwavering support for the sovereignty and territorial integrity of Ukraine within its internationally recognized borders, including its territorial waters. The ongoing conflict continues to devastate civilians' lives and infrastructure, causing large-scale displacement and destruction. According to the data published by UN Human Rights Monitoring Mission in Ukraine, at least 139 civilians were killed and 738 injured in Ukraine in January 2025. This means 39% increase from December 24 and 27% higher than casualties in January 24. Moreover, as per the information released by Office of High Commissioner for Humanitarian Assistance in 2025, 12.7 million people, representing 36% of the Ukrainian population, require humanitarian assistance. The figures just mentioned are staggering. An act of aggression is persisting on a sovereign country in total disregard of the principles of the United Nations Charter and the international law. We recall the obligation of states under Article 2 of the United Nations Charter to refrain in their international relations from the threat of use or force against their territorial integrity or political independence of any state. All the attacks on civilians' infrastructure constitute violations of international law and humanitarian law, and we call on Russian Federation to stop those attacks immediately. Accountability is key for the prevention of atrocities and essential for providing a measure of justice to victims of this war. We reiterate our full support for the work of the United Nations to monitor and report on human rights violations and abuse and to sustain accountability efforts. Furthermore, we support the endeavors by the international community to set up a special tribunal for the crime of aggression against Ukraine. Mr. President, the Republic of Moldova is also greatly impacted by Russia's unprovoked aggression. While Ukraine is resisting a military invasion, my country is on the front line of a hybrid war which includes interalaya gas blackmail, cyber attacks, sabotage, disinformation, and more. Our airspace has been violated several times by Russia's missiles, and missile debris landed on our territory, the most recent incident in this regard being registered on 13th of February. The Republic of Moldova firmly condemns such violations which represent a breach of our sovereignty and a serious threat to our national security. We are committed to further countering these risks in a systematic, legal, and peaceful manner. Excellencies, distinguished delegates, the Republic of Moldova is proud to be one of the consponsor of the draft resolution adopted today by this esteemed Assembly on advancing peace in Ukraine. This document establishes essential guidelines for achieving a comprehensive, just, and lasting peace in Ukraine. We remain steadfast in our commitment to upholding the principles of international law and ensuring respect for Ukraine's sovereignty and territorial integrity. The resolution rightly underscores the necessity of fully implementing the relevant General Assembly resolutions adopted in response to the aggression against Ukraine. In particular, we reiterate the urgent demand for Russian Federation to immediately, completely, and unconditionally withdraw all its military forces from the territory of Ukraine within the internationally recognized borders, a fundamental prerequisite for lasting and sustainable resolution of this war. We urge the international community to remain resolute in the face of Russia's unprovoked aggression and to support the efforts towards a comprehensive, sustainable, and lasting peace. Only a just resolution, one that ensures accountability and prevents future aggression can bring justice to victims of this war and lay the foundation for long-term security in the region. In closing, Mr. President, the Republic of Moldova reaffirms its unwavering solidarity with Ukraine and Ukrainian people in this unjustified war of aggression and people who are courageously defending their territory and striving for a just peace, a peace that would respect Ukraine's sovereignty and territorial integrity in line with the provisions of the UN United Nations Charter, international law, and the relevant General Assembly resolutions. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of the Republic of Moldova. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Portugal.
Mr. President, Portugal stands here today with Ukraine. We align with the EU's statement, and we are very pleased with the adoption of the resolution on advancing a comprehensive, just, and lasting peace in Ukraine, which highlights the commitment of this General Assembly to the UN Charter and to international law. We have also supported the adoption of the resolution on the path to peace as amended. We all want peace. Portugal is unarguably in favor of peace, just not any peace. Mr. President, 80 years ago, representatives of the international community took upon themselves the duty to work together to maintain international peace and security and to prevent future generations from experiencing war. They did so by writing a legally binding document that has shaped our common history for the last eight decades and has established a rules-based multilateral order with the United Nations at its core. We are looking forward to commemorating these major mankind's achievements throughout this year. However, today, we are sadly here to evoke the 3rd anniversary of a breach to this contract. Indeed, three years ago, Russia, a permanent member of the Security Council, has violated its provisions by starting a war in Europe that has caused the suffering of thousands of people and has unleashed a worldwide political and economic turmoil. With the adoption of today's resolution, we once again condemn such violation of the territorial integrity of a sovereign country and above all, call for a comprehensive, just, and lasting peace in Ukraine in full compliance of the UN Charter, international law, and this Assembly's resolution. We supported this resolution in line with Portugal's unwavering support for international law and for the principles of sovereignty and independence, sovereignty and territorial integrity without ambiguities and in all geographies, in Europe, but also in Africa and in the Middle East, while also reaffirming our joint commitment to the protection of civilians from the atrocities of war. By calling for a peaceful resolution of the war against Ukraine, we commend all meaningful diplomatic endeavors that support Ukraine in its efforts to achieve a just, lasting, and comprehensive peace. With our European partners, we are ready to contribute to any negotiations that ensure the sustainability of a peace process, that reconstruction of the country and its future prosperity, stability, and independence. In concluding, Mr. President, by standing with Ukraine throughout its path to peace and freedom, the international community reaffirms its longstanding pledge to the key principles of the UN Charter as we approach the 80th milestone of our common invaluable history of the UN. I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Portugal. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Vietnam.
Mr. President, three years ago, at this very podium, my delegation affirmed that once they erupt, wars and conflicts only inflict immense suffering to human beings and grave consequences for many others. To this day, the loss of human lives and devastation resulting from the conflict in Ukraine are immeasurable. The negative impacts and destabilizing effects extend beyond those directly involved, testing broader regional and global implications. Vietnam follows closely the situation in Ukraine and the far-reaching impact of the conflict with a heavy heart. Having borne the heavy toll of wars, our nation deeply understands the scars of conflicts and the value of peace. Vietnam continues to call for an immediate end to violence, hostilities, and any actions that fuel further escalation. Our priority is safeguarding the security of civilians, protecting critical civilian infrastructure, and addressing the urgent humanitarian needs of those affected by the conflict. Vietnam's consistent stance from day one of the conflict and even beyond its breakout has remained that all disputes must be resolved through peaceful means and the fundamental principles of international law and the UN Charter must be upheld. This includes respecting the independence, sovereignty, and territorial integrity of states and refraining from the threat of use of force. We regret that many opportunities for peace have been missed in the past three years. This conflict needs to come to an end. The human suffering... The human suffering must end. Today marks a critical juncture for us to work together and contribute to peace in Ukraine. It is all the more crucial for the UN membership to promote actions that foster consensus, inclusivity, and with the active participation and concurrence of all directly involved parties instead of division and confrontation. This will pave the way for a lasting, comprehensive, and acceptable solution to all to resolve this conflict, and such a solution can only be achieved through peaceful means in adherence to international law and UN Charter and taking into account the legitimate interest and the role of all parties concerned for the stability and security of the region and the world. Vietnam comments and supports own constructive initiatives, including of the UN, in this direction. For our part, Vietnam stands ready to make our contributions to diplomatic efforts and to the reconstruction, recovery, and assistance in Ukraine. I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Vietnam. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Italy.
Mr. President, Italy fully aligns itself with the statement by the European Union, and would like to add some considerations in its national capacity. On the third tragic anniversary of Russia's full-scale invasion of Ukraine, we stand together with the Ukrainian people to reaffirm our unwavering commitment to our shared values and the UN Charter. The eleventh Emergency Special Session of the General Assembly is convened today to reaffirm the need to ensure that the fundamental principles of international law prevail, not just in Ukraine but wherever they are challenged. Italy remains committed to a comprehensive, just, and lasting peace based on the sovereignty, independence, unity, and territorial integrity of Ukraine. We firmly believe that the full implementation of these principles is not only in the interest of Ukraine and Europe but also of the entire UN membership since they are the foundations that hold the international community together. We are not at war with Russia, but we defend Ukraine's right to be an independent state. We must work together to restore peace in Europe. We need diplomacy. There is no military solution to this conflict but only diplomatic to be achieved through negotiations, and we appreciate the US diplomatic initiative aimed at bringing Russia to the negotiating table. For that reason, we decided to support both resolutions: advanced a comprehensive, just, and lasting peace in Ukraine and the path to peace as amended. At the same time, we believe that only the full involvement of Ukraine and Europe in these negotiations can guarantee a lasting peace in line with the Charter of the United Nations. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Italy. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Luxembourg.
Mr. President. President, Luxembourg aligns itself fully with the statement from the European Union. Allow me to add a few considerations in our national capacity. Three years ago to the day, Russia launched a large-scale war of aggression against its neighbor, Ukraine, a sovereign member state of our organization. While we meet here today, Russian forces are continuing their attacks against civilian people and infrastructure in Ukraine in violation of international humanitarian law. It is therefore more urgent than ever that the General Assembly stand in favor of a comprehensive, just, and lasting peace in Ukraine. That was the objective of the first resolution that we adopted this morning. Luxembourg is proud to have co-sponsored and voted in favor of this resolution prepared by Ukraine with the support of the European Union. The resolution took into account suggestions made throughout the inclusive and transparent consultations that took place. We'd like to thank all member states who voted in favor of this resolution. It is in everyone's interest to defend the United Nations Charter and to this year achieve comprehensive, just, and lasting peace in Ukraine. This resolution recalls a demand on Russia to withdraw all its military forces from Ukraine's territory while calling for a cessation of facilities as soon as possible. In voting in favor of this text, we demonstrated our solidarity with the Ukrainian people and our determination to ensure that international law is respected and prevails. Luxembourg also voted in favor of the resolution prepared by the United States entitled "The Path to Peace." We voted in favor of this following the inclusion of three essential amendments on the sovereignty and territorial integrity of Ukraine and just peace in Ukraine in line with the United Nations Charter. It's important to recall who the aggressor is. It was Russia that launched a large-scale invasion of Ukraine three years ago. In launching its large-scale aggression, an aggression that was unprovoked, unjustified, and unjustifiable against Ukraine, on the twenty-fourth of February, 2022, Russia not only attacked Ukraine, Russia also flouted the international rule of law-based order which is underpinned by the United Nations Charter, and in doing so, it threatened security instability around the world. The numbers of this war of aggression are terrifying. Hundreds of thousands of people have lost their lives. Men, women, and children have been victims of abject violence, including sexual violence. This war has destroyed infrastructure, education infrastructure, health infrastructure, and energy too. It has also left deep-rooted psychological scars on the Ukrainian people. Ukraine today has the most mines in the world. A third of its territory is covered with mines and unexplored ordinance. This situation is a major challenge for long-term security and reconstruction of the country. That's why our support to Ukraine includes humanitarian de-mining. The resolution submitted by Ukraine that we adopted this morning also underscores the need to ensure that the perpetrators of the gravest crimes under international law that have been committed on Ukrainian territory be brought to justice and that justice be served for the victims, also to prevent future crimes. In this context, Luxembourg welcomes the role played by the International Criminal Court, which has already issued several arrest warrants. As the ICC cannot try the crime of aggression in this particular case, we support the creation of a special tribunal for crime of aggression against Ukraine. President, efforts to put an end to the war via diplomacy and dialogue are welcome. Inasmuch, these efforts are also underpinned by the principles of the United Nations Charter. Peace in Ukraine will only last if it is a just peace backed up by solid and reliable security guarantees. Peace in Ukraine and Europe's security are indissociable. Peace in Ukraine will only last if Ukraine and the European Union are fully involved in negotiations. Nothing about Ukraine without Ukraine, nothing about Europe without Europe. In its brave fight to defend its freedom and universal values, Ukraine can continue to count on the full support and solidarity of Luxembourg. Luxembourg will continue to resolutely support the independence, unity, sovereignty, and territorial integrity of Ukraine within its internationally recognized borders. Thank you very much.
I thank the distinguished representative of Luxembourg. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Slovenia.
Thank you, Mr. President. At the outset, I would like to welcome the successful adoption of the resolution this morning. The overwhelming support it received reflects the international community's support of Ukraine, its commitment to the integrity of the UN Charter, and the principles of territorial integrity and settling of disputes by peaceful means. Mr. President, three years have passed since Russia started its unprovoked and illegal aggression against Ukraine in blatant violation of international law. For three years, we have been witnessing Russia's systematic destruction of Ukraine's civilian infrastructure, including hospitals, schools, residential buildings, and energy grids, and a campaign of oppression of its citizens. Three years of war have produced immense destruction and widespread damage to essential and civilian infrastructure. Deliberate attacks against the Ukrainian energy infrastructure have caused a severe energy shortfall. Some ten percent of Ukraine's homes are estimated to have been damaged or destroyed. More than eight hundred hospitals were damaged and over three hundred seventy schools were destroyed. Three years of war also amounted to immense human suffering. The toll on civilian lives is unbearable. Reports also show that every second Ukrainian citizen has been chronically affected by the war. Nearly two-thirds of households are dealing with mental health challenges of their family members, and hundreds of thousands of children are experiencing or are at risk of developing a post-traumatic stress disorder. The intense fighting has displaced over six point nine million people, and almost thirteen million civilians are left in need of humanitarian assistance. This is enough suffering and destruction for a lifetime, and it needs to stop now. Each day this war continues, international humanitarian law is disregarded, violated, and undermined. With each day, the integrity of the UN Charter is ever more at risk. Mr. President, we all want to see peace in Ukraine as soon as possible, but it matters greatly how the peace process ends. Russian aggression must stop. Cease fire must be achieved and sufficient security guarantees for Ukraine ensured. Negotiations for just and lasting peace must be held with Ukraine and the European Union at the negotiating table. Any peace talks must be anchored in the principles that we have agreed to in the UN Charter, including the respect for sovereignty and territorial integrity of its member states. Slovenia is ready to support the endeavors to reach a just and lasting peace in line with the UN Charter, which will aim to rebuild trust and bring about lasting peace and stability in Eastern Europe. A just and lasting peace also calls for accountability. Slovenia will therefore, in the General Assembly and elsewhere, continue to scrutinize the implementation of international law, particularly international humanitarian law and human rights law. We will continue to call for accountability for international crimes, including war crimes and crimes against humanity. Mr. President, lasting peace is not just the absence of war but also the presence of justice, accountability, and the unwavering respect for international law. Slovenia stands ready to support such efforts to end the war in Ukraine, bringing a long overdue peace to the Ukrainian people. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Slovenia. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Liechtenstein.
Mr. President, today we commemorate once again Russia's aggression against Ukraine that, as we often tend to forget, had its inception in February, 2014, with the invasion of Eastern Ukraine and the attempted illegal annexation of Crimea. On this rare day three years ago, Russia launched its full-scale invasion against its neighbor in blatant violation of the UN Charter, causing immense suffering for the people of Ukraine but also impacting the entire world. The drawn attack against the Chernobyl nuclear power plant two weeks ago and Russia's deployment of troops from the DPRK are just recent examples that demonstrate clearly the regional and global ramifications of this illegal war waged by Russia, and that it must be of continuous concern to all of us committed to the UN Charter and the international rule of law. In retrospect, it is clear that our response to the aggression of 2014 was insufficient. GA Resolution 68-262 lacked the necessary clarity and determination to unequivocally condemn the aggression by the Russian Federation and even failed to identify it as such. This limited response far from preventing subsequent acts of aggression has de facto been a contributing factor to Russia's full-scale invasion three years ago. We must acknowledge the shortcomings of our collective action and recognize the need to respond to future cases with greater resolve from the outset. It is our collective responsibility to uphold the purposes and principles of the UN Charter. Mr. President, the resolutions adopted by this Assembly in the framework of the Eleventh Emergency Special Session since 2022 demonstrate a more robust and principled approach. By adopting two resolutions today on advancing a comprehensive, just, and lasting peace in Ukraine and on the path to peace with the strong majority of the membership of this organization, this Assembly has again demonstrated its ability to play its role in matters of peace and security and reiterated the relevant parameters for a just and lasting peace in Ukraine. The implementation of these resolutions is key, especially to bring an end to the continuous fighting that has caused immense suffering to the civilian population, to ensure accountability for the crimes committed under international law, including the crime of aggression, and to bring justice for all victims and survivors. Meaningful initiatives for a comprehensive, just, and lasting peace in Ukraine must be based on the UN Charter, in particular the principles of sovereignty, independence, and territorial integrity, international law and relevant GA resolutions. They need to include all relevant parties and especially Ukraine, the victim state of aggression, who indeed has signaled its willingness to engage in peace talks, as well as those involved in the execution of a peace agreement, one that not only brings just and lasting peace to Ukraine but also security to the entire region. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Liechtenstein. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of the Bolivarian Republic
Mr. President, as a founding member of the United Nations, the Bolivarian Republic of Venezuela is a firm defender of the purposes and principles enshrined in the foundational charter of our organization as well as the norms of international law. Mr. President, when addressing the issue of Ukraine, my country, faithful as we are to our diplomacy for peace, has always opted for the peaceful settlement of the conflict. With this spirit in mind, we supported in the Security Council in 2015 the package of measures for the implementation of the Minsk agreements. This year, we saw a diplomatic path built towards achieving a solution to the civil war in Ukraine. Unfortunately, these agreements were used as an excuse to gain time and to further increase armed force, leading to greater national division. In 2022, a new phase of the conflict was seen with the outbreak of an internal civil war and then a confrontation, international confrontation between Ukraine and the Russian Federation. At that time, we avoided joining the war-mongering propaganda which called for reigniting the conflict, and we decisively supported peace negotiations that began in Belarus and then continued in Turkey. These negotiations were very close to achieving a solution to the conflict, but today we know that they were interrupted by very influential actors from third states interested in continuing and expanding the war. Today, after hundreds of thousands of people have been killed... Today, after hundreds of thousands of people have been killed on the battlefield and after millions of innocent civilians have had their lives ruined and become displaced, and the massive destruction of the economic infrastructure of the two countries, the conflict runs the risk of expanding once again into a third phase that will be more dangerous and even more destructive. A group of countries is convinced that they can expand their presence within Ukraine by accelerating the arms race and imposing a military solution to the conflict. In the last months of 2024, we saw the transfer to this third level where nuclear powers are ever increasingly involved in Ukraine with arms, technology, and training of troops, all of this running the risk of unleashing a global conflict. This is the path of the growing war that we have seen since 2015. Given the alternative to endless war, in recent weeks there has been a new proposal for negotiation to achieve sustainable and permanent peace at the three levels of the conflict. We are now facing a fork in the road. Do we continue with the war, or do we achieve peace through dialogue, diplomacy, and political negotiation? The United Nations was born after the worst war in history in order to guarantee international peace and security. Its greatest success has been to avoid a third World War. Also, when it has not been possible to avoid an armed conflict, the role of our organization has been, through political negotiation, to steer conflicts towards the path of diplomacy for their peaceful resolution. This is our obligation today to correct the course and to build a path which prevents an escalation of tension. For these reasons, we welcome the initiative proposed today to the General Assembly entitled "A Path to Peace," because on the basis of practical and realistic arrangements, it attempts to put an end to the conflict in Ukraine through dialogue. We call upon the responsible members of the international community to provide, give an opportunity for these negotiations to begin in order to provide a comprehensive and lasting solution that will benefit the peoples of Ukraine and the Russian Federation. Our role, Mr. President, is not to feed tensions and divisions. We need to put an end to any action that would tend to create greater confrontation, dividing the world into blocks, promoting hateful ideologies, using incendiary rhetoric and war-mongering propaganda to justify the provision of arms, which simply extends wars, and also the imposition of unilateral coercive measures, which will never lead to lasting peace. The last three years of the war have shown clearly that this is the path to destruction. For these reasons, we believe that the draft resolution contained in document A/ES11/L10 and recently adopted, well, adopted today by this General Assembly, contains selectivity which does not help to create the conditions necessary for moving towards peace between Russian Federation and Ukraine. Likewise, the amendments proposed in L13, L14, and L15 seem to want to remove all content from the offer for a rapid end to the conflict and achieving lasting peace, as was clearly proposed in the original version of the draft resolution "A Path to Peace." Mr. President, to conclude, in Venezuela, we recognize that initiatives for peace dialogues such as that presented today to the General Assembly are more than unusual. They are really extraordinary. The selfish political calculations or the differences that we want to maintain with other states should not close the doors to this singular opportunity to put an end to a longstanding war that will continue to expand without end. We must comply with the purposes and principles of the UN Charter and defend the right to peace of the peoples of Ukraine and the Russian Federation. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of the Bolivarian Republic of Venezuela. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Australia.
For three years, Australia has stood with Ukraine as it bravely defends itself from Russia's illegal and immoral full-scale invasion in flagrant violation of the UN Charter. As a permanent member of the UN Security Council, Russia has an obligation to uphold international peace and security, yet it has chosen to target the sovereignty and territorial integrity of its peaceful neighbor. Russia's actions, including its destruction of Ukraine's agricultural land and export infrastructure, cause harm globally, including for countries already facing acute food and energy insecurity, raising the cost of living for people all over the world. Australia believes that all countries are better off in a world where differences and disputes are settled through institutions, agreed rules and norms, and not by power and size alone. The fate of Ukraine is a test for these international rules that have underpinned global peace, stability, and prosperity. North Korea's deployment of thousands of troops to aid Russia is a dangerous escalation of the war. Deepening military cooperation between Russia and North Korea is destabilizing Europe and threatening the security of Australia's region, the Indo-Pacific. Australia also has deep concerns regarding dual-use goods trade that sustains Russia's military. We urge all countries, including China, to step up efforts to prevent this trade which supports Russia's invasion and defense industrial base. Russia's war has been marked by numerous reports of war crimes and human rights violations. Russia must adhere to its obligations under international humanitarian law, including the protection of civilians, including aid workers, and the treatment of civilian detainees and prisoners of war. Russia must provide full access to the International Committee of the Red Cross to all areas of Ukraine temporarily controlled by Russia, including all places of detention. Australia unreservedly condemns Russia's irresponsible nuclear rhetoric and saber rattling through its illegal invasion. Despite condemnation from a majority of UN member states in July 2024, Russia's war has increased the risk of a catastrophic nuclear accident. Continued attacks on infrastructure and reckless conduct threatens to compromise nuclear safety, particularly at Ukraine's Sabarisha and Chernobyl nuclear power plants. President, we welcome all meaningful progress towards a just and sustainable peace. A lasting peace should uphold Ukraine's sovereignty and territorial integrity, support security and stability in Europe, and ensure Russia does not renew its aggression. For any peace deal to succeed, negotiations must include Ukraine. Australia is providing meaningful support totaling over $1.5 billion in military, economic, humanitarian, and energy support to Ukraine, and we have implemented a comprehensive suite of economic measures to ensure Australia does not fund Russia's aggression. On this somber milestone, Australia mourns Ukraine's losses and reflects on the bravery and resilience of the Ukrainian people. The international community must come together to advance and achieve a comprehensive, just, and lasting peace in Ukraine. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Australia. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Japan.
It is with great sadness and pain that we are in this Emergency Special Session, marking three years since Russia's began its unprovoked war of aggression against a sovereign nation of Ukraine. This war, which has caused innumerable tragedies over the past three years, should have ended earlier. Japan appreciates all the diplomatic efforts concerning the situation in Ukraine and once again emphasizes the importance of solidarity on our side in the pursuit for peace in the country. During this period, many innocent civilians have lost their lives, and many more have been injured by Russia's ruthless and indiscriminate attacks on critical infrastructure, including hospitals, schools, and power plants. The effects of Russia's aggression also have global repercussions in such far-reaching areas as food security, energy, finance, the environment, and nuclear security and safety. Japan reaffirms its respect and solidarity with the people of Ukraine, who have demonstrated remarkable resilience in defending their country and its future over the past three years. Mr. President, in a world of diverse views and positions, the UN Charter serves as a foundation of all international relations and a common agreement that member states must faithfully observe. Russia's aggression against Ukraine is, however, a clear and blatant violation of international law, including the UN Charter, as this General Assembly has repeatedly restated, and an act that fundamentally undermines the foundation. If such violations were tolerated, it would set a dangerous precedent, returning us to a jungle dominated by brute force and coercion. For this very reason, it is imperative we stand side by side with the people of Ukraine. Japan condemns its strongest terms Russia's aggression against Ukraine and strongly demands that Russia cease its aggression immediately and listen to the voice of the international community. In this regard, we appreciate the various diplomatic efforts which are currently ongoing, including those of the United States, and hope that those efforts did a breakthrough in the situation. Mr. President, Japan also strongly condemns engagement of North Korea's troops in combat against Ukraine, which also constitutes a clear violation of international law, including the UN Charter. This unlawful, unjustified, and unacceptable military cooperation between Russia and the DPRK has expanded the scope of the conflict beyond the region and undermines global peace and security. Furthermore, Japan reiterates its deep concern about the military cooperation between Iran and Russia. The international community must refrain from any action, direct or indirect, that would support Russia's aggression. Mr. President, any unilateral attempt to change the status quo by force is unacceptable anywhere in the world, and such an attempt should never be rewarded. The repercussions of allowing such attempts to occur would be global and undoubtedly affect everyone for years to come. Japan reiterates that this is not a matter of choosing sides between Ukraine and Russia, but of a matter of principle of either upholding, upholding, or disregarding the UN Charter. Japan will continue its diplomatic efforts and stand firmly with Ukraine and the international community until comprehensive, just, and lasting peace, based on the purposes and principles of the UN Charter, is achieved in Ukraine. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Japan. I give the floor now to the distinguished representative of Brazil.
Mr. President, ever since the beginning of the conflict, Brazil has insisted on the need for de-escalation and the importance of finding a peaceful resolution to the war through dialogue and diplomacy. At this juncture, we need to put in motion concrete efforts to this end. It is high time we move beyond restating well-known positions and actually work towards dialogue and building bridges. Divisiveness leads us nowhere, and there is no more time to spare. It is time to put an end to this conflict, which has cost so many lives and caused extensive destruction. Moving forward, it is crucial that all relevant parties be present at the negotiating table. The actors involved need to find a middle ground that acceptable to all sides. This is the only way we can attain a comprehensive, lasting, and sustainable peace. This conflict has had global repercussions, affecting peace and security in other regions of the world. For this reason, we believe that developing countries have relevant contributions to offer. Dealing with such situations, as we have always done, has shown no results. It is time to listen to the voice of the global South. We have been working with our partners in the Group of Friends for Peace to identify ways to contribute to a peaceful settlement of the conflict. Bringing both parties to the table, addressing the root causes of the conflict, and providing security guarantees to both Russia and Ukraine is the way forward. We will continue to promote peace, security, and prosperity for Europe and the entire international community. It is our belief that the peaceful resolution to the war in Ukraine may represent an important step towards reinvigorating multilateralism and strengthening a multipolar order that benefits all. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Brazil. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of the Democratic People's Republic of Korea.
Mr. President, delegation of the DPRK has strongly condemned that Ukraine and Western countries have again convened this meeting, which is motivated by sinister political pokes and aimed at deceiving international community and turning black into white. It is widely known that Ukrainian crisis was caused by Western forces, which have systematically denied legitimate security interests of the Russian Federation and recklessly pursued NATO's advance toward the East under the ambitions of the sustaining hegemonic world order. The current Ukrainian crisis, which has introduced worst security crisis after Second World War, remain unresolved even though almost three years have passed. It is attributable to the West, the pooling astronomical amounts of military aid in Kyiv region, obsessed with impractical daydream of systematically defeating Russia by all possible means. For the past three years, the West offered Ukraine the military aid to barely over nearly $200 billion. Worse still, even amid emerging a signal on coordinating Ukrainian crisis in peaceful manner, the Western military equipment, including fighter, continue to be delivered to the Lengsk region. This fact clearly indicates who is destroying and obliterating security in the Europe. Instead of reflecting on their anti-peace criminal act at this meeting, Ukraine and Wests are seeking to have the resolution adopted in order to shift responsibility to other. I consider it as serious political provocation and freely reject and denounce it. A development of the normal cooperative relationship between sovereign states, strictly consistent with the UN Charter and international law, is not a matter of intervention. True to the spirit of DPRK, the Russian Federation treaty on comprehensive strategic partnership, the DPRK remain invariably committing to supporting and encouraging the army and people of Russia in the just course to defend sovereignty, security, and territorial integrity. The righteous international community should never tolerate act of infringing upon the sovereignty and undermining peace by Western forces, the hegemonic entity which seek to impose crucial role and catastrophic disaster, and should turn out proactively in the struggle for safeguarding justice, equitability, peace, and stability. I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of the Democratic People's Republic of Korea. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Montenegro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Excellencies, dear colleagues, we've entered the fourth year of unprecedented and devastating act of aggression, an unprovoked war waged by a nuclear power and a permanent member of the Security Council against a sovereign UN member state. For three For three years, we have witnessed a blatant and continuous violation of the UN Charter and fundamental principles of international law. There is no justification for the violence that has persisted for so long. Montenegro once again strongly condemns Russia's illegal act and the immense suffering it has inflicted on Ukraine, including the killings of civilians, unlawful attack on civilian and energy infrastructure, sexual, gender-based violence, and appalling reports of addictions of children. There can be no impunity for war crimes and other most serious crimes. Ensure accountability is of the utmost importance for achieving lasting peace. We are appalled by the findings of the Secretary-General's report of children in army conflict. We call on the Russian Federation to fully comply with international humanitarian law and take immediate measures to protect children, women, and the elderly. Furthermore, we strongly condemn the deployment of DPRK troops in Ukraine, an act that blatantly violates UN Security Council resolutions on disarmament, nonproliferation, and export control. Once again, Montenegro stands firmly supporting Ukraine's independence, sovereignty, and territorial integrity within its internationally recognized borders. We remain committed to a comprehensive, just, and lasting peace in Ukraine, firmly rooted in the UN Charter and acknowledging its importance for the European and global security. This is what people in Ukraine deserve, and it is our collective responsibility to deliver it. Excellencies, dear colleagues, in the end, I would like to pay my utmost respect to the women of Ukraine and their indescribable courage. I would like to pay tribute to the heroic mothers of Ukraine, who gave birth to Ukrainian heroes who constantly, without sparing their lives, defending Ukraine from the aggression on the battlefield. I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Montenegro. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of San Marino.
Mr. President, in his third tragic anniversary, San Marino would like to reaffirm its support for Ukraine's independence, sovereignty, and territorial integrity within its internationally recognized borders, and calls on all parties to commit to political dialogue and to diplomatic negotiations in order to de-escalate this conflict and to achieve a comprehensive, just, and lasting peace in Ukraine, consistent with the United Nations Charter and with international law. San Marino reaffirms its condemnation of the Russian Federation's unprovoked and unjustified war of aggression against Ukraine as a violation of international law. It is paramount to protect the foundations of our multilateral system and to guarantee the respect of humanitarian and human right law, as well as to ensure accountability for any violations. San Marino wishes to renew its sincere solidarity to the government and people of Ukraine. Mr. President, we are deeply concerned for the devastating and long-lasting consequences of this conflict, as well as for its repercussions on regional and global stability. In line with its millenary vocation for peace, San Marino reiterates its call for dialogue. We welcome any diplomatic efforts toward a diplomatic solution of the conflict. Dialogue among all parties is the first step toward peace. We remain embraced to that hope that through diplomacy, a comprehensive, just, and lasting peace will be soon achieved. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of San Marino. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Armenia.
Mr. President, Armenia expresses its strong concern on the continuing hostilities in Ukraine, which have led to thousands of casualties, violence, destruction, and mass displacement. It continues to have a particularly heavy toll on the most vulnerable, the civilian population, including children, women, and the elderly. Armenia reiterates its principled and longstanding position on the full compliance of all parties to the Geneva Conventions and their additional protocols and international human rights law via view to ensure protection of the civilian populations and minimize the impact of the hostilities on the critical infrastructure. We support efforts of the international community aimed at complete cessation of all hostilities and opening opportunities for peace negotiations. Armenia stresses the importance of achieving a comprehensive, just, and lasting peace anchored on the purposes and principles of the UN Charter and international law. And I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Armenia. I now give the floor to the distinguished... to the observer of the Observer State of the Holy See.
Mr. President, today we mark the third anniversary of the beginning of the Russian aggression against Ukraine. The Holy See expresses deep concern at the protraction of the conflict, which is causing a great loss of life and hardship for the entire Ukrainian population. Over the past three years, the world has witnessed the far-reaching consequences of this war, also beyond the borders of Ukraine. The conflict has had a profound impact on the global economy, contributing to instability in areas such as food security, energy, and nuclear safety, while exacerbating environmental damages. At the humanitarian level, the war's impact is devastating, especially for the most vulnerable: women and children, refugees, internally displaced persons, those with disabilities, and the elderly, have borne the brunt of this crisis, suffering not only from physical harm but also from the erosion of their basic rights and access to essential services. The ripple effects of this war are being felt across the globe, underscoring the urgent need for a comprehensive and lasting solution to restore peace and prevent further harm to innocent lives. Mr. President, allow me to reiterate, in the words of Pope Francis, a principle that has often been forgotten and misunderstood: War is always a failure. The involvement of civilians, especially children, and the destruction of infrastructures is not only a disaster, but essentially means that between the two sides only evil emerges the winner. We cannot in any way accept the bombing of civilians or the attacking of infrastructures necessary for their survival. Mr. President, in this jubilee year, Pope Francis affirms that his wish for 2025 is that the entire international community will work above all to end the conflict that has caused so much bloodshed in war-torn Ukraine and has taken an enormous toll of lives, including those of many civilians. For this reason, the Holy See reiterates its call for an immediate cessation of hostilities and stresses the urgent need to pursue peace without further delay. Thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished observer of the Observer State of the Holy See. I now give the floor to the observer of the International Institute for Democracy and Electoral Assistance.
Mr. President, excellencies. International Idea reaffirms our unwavering commitment to democracy, sovereignty, and the right of all people to determine their future through free and fair elections. International Idea welcomes all diplomatic efforts aimed at securing a just peace in Ukraine. But peace must be rooted in justice, sovereignty, and international law, not imposed through ultimatums or political expediency. Any settlement must uphold the core principles of the UN Charter. Russia's illegal aggression, ongoing since 2014, is a blatant violation of Ukraine's territorial integrity and the fundamental right of its people to self-determination. These principles are non-negotiable. Any diplomatic effort to bring the war to an end must recognize that the decision to hold elections in Ukraine belongs to Ukraine alone and is rooted in international law. According to Ukrainian law, elections can only take place after martial law is lifted. No external actor has the right to dictate the timing or conditions of Ukraine's democratic processes. No external actor has this right. Democracy cannot be imposed under the shadow of war, nor can elections be used as a tool for political expediency. A lasting and just peace in Ukraine requires a clear and principled sequence of actions. A ceasefire must come first, followed by a sustainable peace agreement. Only then can free, fair, and legitimate elections take place. Any attempt to reverse this order, forcing elections before peace is secured, would be reckless and dangerous. It would risk further destabilizing Ukraine, undermining its democratic integrity, and ultimately serving the interests of Russia, who launched this brutal war in the first place. Even after hostility ceases, organizing elections in Ukraine will be an enormous challenge. Millions of Ukrainians have been forcibly displaced, both within their country and abroad. Ensuring their right to vote in a free and fair manner will require careful planning and immense international support. For elections to be meaningful, Ukraine will need large-scale logistical, technological, and political assistance. The international community must stand ready to help rebuild electoral infrastructure, restore access to independent media, and support displaced voters in exercising their democratic rights. A rushed or ill-prepared election would have catastrophic consequences for peace and for Ukraine. It could jeopardize the legitimacy of the result, fuel external and internal intentions, and provide propaganda ammunition to the enemies of democracy, the very same forces that waged war against Ukraine in the first place. Ukraine is, and has always been, a democracy under attack. The Ukrainian people have fought and sacrificed not just for their right to live in an independent country, but for their right to live under a democratic system. A just peace must ensure that Ukraine remains a sovereign, democratic state where its people, not foreign powers, dictate their future. International Idea calls upon all UN member states to support this legitimate goal. We stand ready to assist Ukraine's democratic institutions, particularly its electoral authorities, in preparing for the day when conditions allow for elections that meet international standards. Democracy must not become a casualty of war, nor should it be used as a bargaining chip to legitimize aggression. There can be no free elections without security. There can be no democracy without sovereignty. There can be no lasting peace without justice. This assembly must stand firm in defense of these principles and ensure that Ukraine emerges from this war stronger, sovereign, and democratic. Jaku.
I thank the distinguished representative of the International Institute for Democracy and Electoral Assistance. I now give the floor to the distinguished observer of the Sovereign Order of Malta.
Mr. President, excellencies, distinguished colleagues. For three years, we've borne witness to the immense suffering inflicted upon the Ukrainian people, an anguish so profound that words struggle to convey its full measure. The sheer scale of losses staggering: lives senselessly cut short, families torn apart, generations left to bear the weight of a deep psychological and physical scar. The Sovereign Order of Malta is one of the few entities here today that has both shared and observed the suffering and pain of the Ukrainian people in their homeland. Our Crisis Response Agency, Maltese International in partnership with the Ukrainian Association of the Order of Malta, continues to provide lifesaving assistance to innocent civilians as it has done for the past three years, ensuring that those caught in conflict have the fundamental necessities, not privileges, but unequivocal human rights, things like the basic elements of survival: clean drinking water, food, shelter, warmth, medical care, things essential, yet out of reach for so many. We continue to support the sick, the poor, and the dispossessed, both within Ukraine's borders and beyond them. We will continue to assist amputation patients, ensuring they receive not only limbs but comprehensive rehabilitation, physiotherapy, and psychological care. We will persist in providing psychosocial support to victims, striving to mitigate the deep, invisible wounds of war, especially among children and young adults. And we will continue to comfort and support the elderly. Today, as we gather on the solemn occasion of this war's third anniversary, we must also recognize that within these very halls lies the power to say once and for all: Enough of war. Enough of death. But words alone will not suffice. The credibility of this institution and the rules-based order itself rests not on the repetition of condemnations and blame, but in the tangible actions taken to uphold the principles on which the organization was founded. Suffering is neither inevitable, nor is it necessary. Let us apply the very values we profess, the values of justice and human dignity, to bring this war to an end. Let us hasten for the day when those caught in this conflict across all borders can reclaim not just peace, but a future based on security, stability, the chance to lead dignified and fulfilling lives, and where they can again find brotherhood with their neighbors. We are all commanded to love our neighbor, just as we wish to be loved, and to seek forgiveness when we have transgressed. Isn't that an underlying rationale for this organization? And are these not signposts, signposts of hope on a path to peace? Thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished observer of the Sovereign Order of Malta. We have heard the last speaker in the debate on this item. The exercise of the right of reply has been requested. May I remind members that statements in the exercise of the right of reply are limited to ten minutes for the first intervention and to five minutes for the second intervention, and should be made by delegations from their seats. I now call on the representative of India.
Mr. President, I am taking the floor to express our disgust and utter disappointment at yet another attempt by Pakistan to divert this assembly from its agenda in this eleventh emergency special session. The Union territory of Jammu and Kashmir is and will remain an integral part of India. Pakistani rhetoric can't alter this reality. Everyone can see through these cynical attempts by Pakistan to misuse this August forum for its propaganda. I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of India. I now call on the distinguished representative of Pakistan.
Thank you, Mr. President. My delegation has been compelled to take the floor to respond to the statement made by the Indian delegate. No amount of sophistry and of his creation can change the historical, political, and legal reality that Jammu and Kashmir never was, nor is, the so-called "integral part of India." The fact remains that Jammu and Kashmir is an internationally recognized disputed territory. One just needs to consult the UN official maps to establish this fact. India is in its forcible occupation of parts of India is in its forcible occupation of parts of Jammu and Kashmir, in contravention and blatant violation of multiple resolutions of the UN Security Council, which reaffirms that the final disposition of Jammu and Kashmir will be decided by its people through a UN-supervised plebiscite in line with the UN Charter's principle of the right of self-determination of the Kashmiri people. I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of India. I now call on the distinguished representative of the Democratic People's Republic of Korea.
Thank you, Mr. President. In exercise of the right of reply, my delegation categorically rejects the provocative remarks made by ROK, Japan, Australia, and others. The groundless and reckless accusation is aimed at tarnishing the image of a dignified UN member state and distorting the essence of the normal cooperative relationship between the DPRK and the Russian Federation. As of now, the Ukrainian crisis is prolonged, and the security situation in Europe is destabilized. It is totally attributable to the wrong practice of the West, persisting in their hegemony-oriented and adventuristic military policy, obsessed with a pipe dream of strategically defeating Russia. By nature, the comprehensive strategic partnership between the DPRK and the Russian Federation is intended to promote and defend fundamental interests of both countries and peoples. More importantly, it serves as an engine for accelerating the building of a multipolar world free of domination, subjugation, hegemony, and high-handedness. As of today, by all accounts, NATO, the mastermind of the Ukrainian crisis, and the US-Japan ROK triangular military alliance of aggressive nature, which is being transformed into an Asian version of NATO, are just council-like entities geopolitizing the international order anchored on the purposes and the principles of the UN Charter and constitute major threat to international peace and security. Moreover, ROK and Japan, which are dyed with a pro-US submission, have neither entitlement nor justification to tamper with the DPRK-Russian Federation strategic partnership based on sovereign equality, as enshrined in the UN Charter. DPRK will put no restriction on safeguarding and exercising the inherent legitimate right of a sovereign state and will make... continue to make major efforts to preserve regional and global peace and security. The dogs bark, but the caravan moves on. I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of the Democratic People's Republic of Korea. And I now call on the distinguished representative of the Islamic Republic of Iran.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Bismillah, Rahmanir Raheem. I will make three brief points in exercising my right of reply, Mr. President. As it has been reiterated morning today, the position of the Islamic Republic of Iran on the Ukraine conflict is consistent. It has no military solution. It must be... it must end peacefully and immediately. We categorically reject certain politically motivated accusations made against us by a specific delegation regarding to this conflict as raised in this meeting. The military cooperation between Iran and the Russian Federation is legal and within the framework of the independent decisions of both countries, and it is not against any third party. Thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of the Islamic Republic of Iran. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of the Republic of Korea.
Thank you, President. Many countries, including South Korea, have confirmed the deployment of North Korean troops to support Russia's military operation. We strongly condemn the illegal military cooperation between Russia and North Korea and demand its immediate cessation. The benefits North Korea receives in exchange for its military weapons support will inevitably be used to provoke and threaten us. Such Russia-North Korean cooperation not only poses a severe security threat to the Korean Peninsula, Northeast Asia, and Europe, but also undermines international law and global order, including non-proliferation regime. I reiterate, this illegal cooperation should be... should be stopped immediately. Thank you, President.
I now call... I... I express my appreciation to the distinguished representative of the Republic of Korea. And I now call on the representative of the Democratic People's Republic of Korea for a second intervention.
Thank you, Mr. President, for giving me the floor again. My delegation categorically rejects the absurd remark by ROK. We expect nothing new from ROK, which is hell-bent on animosity and antagonism against the DPRK. It is not surprising that ROK is parroting disinformation, false narratives, and the false flags spread by the West in order to shift responsibility for the prolonged Ukrainian crisis. To reiterate, the DPRK-Russian Federation strategic partnership fully accosts with the UN Charter and international law by nature, and it is totally from the... it's totally different from the vertical and aggressive US-ROK and US-Japan ROK alliances. At this critical juncture, when geopolitical tensions are heightened and regional and international peace and security are perilous owing to the provocative military moves of the ROK backed by the United States, we know well what to do and are ready to whatever it takes to safeguard justice, regional, and international peace and security. I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of the Democratic People's Republic of Korea. I now call on the distinguished representative of Japan.
Thank you, Mr. President. In regards to the North Korea's comment, Japan is not going to repeat our position in detail, but Japan would like to emphasize once again Japan strongly condemns the engagement of North Korea's troops in combat against Ukraine, which also constitutes a clear violation of international law, including the UN Charter. This unlawful, unjustified, and unacceptable military cooperation between Russia and DPRK has expanded the scope of the conflict beyond the region and undermines global peace and security. Furthermore, Japan reiterates... So, that is our position. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Japan. In accordance with the terms of paragraph 10 of Resolution ES-11/7, the eleventh emergency special session of the Assembly is temporarily adjourned. The meeting is adjourned.